School and tourists are coming back. There are so many questions about how all this is going to work in the era of COVID-19. So that's a focus of our upcoming RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall Meeting. That's going to be taking place Thursday at 8:35 PM. So we want you to send in your questions, video questions as well, to 3810072. That's 3810072. If you're sending in a video question, please keep your phone like this. Do not send us video questions like this. So remember, horizontal, not vertical. Send in also your comments and your responses that you want us to include in the town hall. We look forward to see.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Hi everybody! Now the economy is reopening, CSEC and CAPE students are back at school and tourists are coming back. There are so many questions about how all this is going to work in the era of COVID-19. So that's a focus of our upcoming RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall Meeting. That's going to be taking place Thursday at 8:35 PM. So we want you to send in your questions, video questions as well, to 3810072. That's 3810072. If you're sending in a video question, please keep your phone like this. Do not send us video questions like this. So remember, horizontal, not vertical. Send in also your comments and your responses that you want us to include in the town hall. We look forward to see.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with the cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Hi everybody! Now the economy is reopening, CSEC and CAPE students are back at school and tourists are coming back. There are so many questions about how all this is going to work in the era of COVID-19. So that's a focus of our upcoming RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall Meeting. That's going to be taking place Thursday at 8:35 PM. So we want you to send in your questions, video questions as well, to 3810072. That's 3810072. If you're sending in a video question, please keep your phone like this. Do not send us video questions like this. So remember, horizontal, not vertical. Send in also your comments and your responses that you want us to include in the town hall. We look forward to see.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching. Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Hi everybody! Now the economy is reopening, CSEC and CAPE students are back at school and tourists are coming back. There are so many questions about how all this is going to work in the era of COVID-19. So that's a focus of our upcoming RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall Meeting. That's going to be taking place Thursday at 8:35 PM. So we want you to send in your questions, video questions as well, to 3810072. That's 3810072. If you're sending in a video question, please keep your phone like this. Do not send us video questions like this. So remember, horizontal, not vertical. Send in also your comments and your responses that you want us to include in the town hall. We look forward to see.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
COVID-19 tip. Protect yourself and others from getting sick by washing your hands after coughing or sneezing, when caring for the sick, before, during and after you prepare food, before eating, after toilet use, when hands are visibly dirty, and after handling animals or animal waste.
Hi everybody! Now the economy is reopening, CSEC and CAPE students are back at school and tourists are coming back. There are so many questions about how all this is going to work in the era of COVID-19. So that's a focus of our upcoming RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall Meeting. That's going to be taking place Thursday at 8:35 PM. So we want you to send in your questions, video questions as well, to 3810072. That's 3810072. If you're sending in a video question, please keep your phone like this. Do not send us video questions like this. So remember, horizontal, not vertical. Send in also your comments and your responses that you want us to include in the town hall. We look forward to see.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Good evening and thank you so much for joining us for another RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall Meeting. I'm Dion Jackson-Millau. And a very special welcome to our viewers and our listeners who are on... who are joining us on TVJ, JNN, Radio Jamaica, Power 106, Onespotmedia.com, TVJ's YouTube channel, as well as the Gleaner online. And today, we're going to be focusing on the reopening of the Jamaican economy. And there are so many questions people have about these issues. There is the economy itself, there's of course a plan to reopen tourism as well. And as well, there is education. CSEC and CAPE students are now back at school and what happens come September? So there are all these questions and we're trying to get to as many of them as we can. Joining us in our town hall, we have Minister Without Portfolio in the Office of the Prime Minister, Daryl Vaz. We also have with us the President of the Private Sector Organisation of Jamaica, Keith Duncan. And Lloyd Distant also with us, the President of the Jamaica Chamber of Commerce. Before we go to our guests though, we asked members of the public what they thought about the reopening.
At the right timing. Right now is the right time. You know, too early and not too late.
It's a good idea that the country is gradually trying to pick up back the pace. Because when it comes on to tourism, a lot of person work in the hospitality industry and going back to work means a lot.
Jamaica pretty much depends on tourism. It's the number one income. And we see pretty much where it's taken the country since the closure. And honestly, I think yes, we definitely need for the country to be reopened.
Coming home, oh my god. It's like a rich heaven, I come out of prison.
With what is going on right now even in America, we still have to be very cautious, you know? But we need the support from international community.
We need schools to open. And I know that there are lots of children that don't have the internet and all of that. But it is going to be a very tight, tight, a tight call.
I mean, we work so hard to keep the COVID-19 to a level in Jamaica. And now we're going to open it just like that and tourists are going to come without testing. It's like, and Jamaica are going to come with, and have the test. It's like a double standard system in Jamaica. But I like that.
Alright, now I just want to dive right into the video questions that we have. And this question came up over and over. This one from Chad Niemeyer.
The Medical Association of Jamaica categorically states that it is opposed to tourists coming to our shores without mandatory testing. We advise the government to revisit this issue and to stay on a path that incorporates sound medical principles. This sentiment is further corroborated by a survey which was done by the Ministry of Tourism, which indicates that 73% of workers in the tourism sector are in favour of mandatory testing for both tourists and workers. Why hasn't the government followed these very strong recommendations by our medical experts?
Well, you know, the Health Minister had a press conference that ended just a short while ago and that question was also put to the Tourism Minister. This is what he said.
Pre-testing is not on the table. But testing is, and that all visitors and locals alike who are coming in as of the 15th will be tested.
Alright, well, we do have Daryl Vaz on the line. Daryl Vaz, what an about turn! Just a little while ago, we're hearing from the government, they can't test, it doesn't make sense testing, too expensive, not practical. Now we're hearing there will be testing. What can you tell us?
Well, I know that Minister Bartlett and Minister Tufton had a press conference earlier this afternoon. I know it has been a discussion, an ongoing discussion. I know there are several different factors that have to be considered. But the only thing I can say beyond is that the government is listening and has listened. We originally had said that there would be screening and not testing. And based on consultations, the agreement is that there will be testing, which obviously will be in the benefit of those who are coming to the shores and those who are actually living here in Jamaica, which are the Jamaican citizens, which are the most important to us.
Alright, thank you so much. We still, well, let me just ask our other guest for a comment on that as well. Keith Duncan, I know a lot of people in the private sector also had questions about this concern. Your reaction to hearing this change of policy?
Yeah, well, I just heard this like 30 seconds ago. But you know, there is, you know, this environment is changing so quickly and the whole, you know, management and the whole, you know, we still continue to learn so much about the virus. And I believe, you know, this would have constantly been under kind of assessment. Because as, as the, you know, testing becomes more and more available and more developed in terms of what's done and in terms of our own internal capacity, then I, you know, I thought at some point in, you know, creating a COVID resilient destination, that testing would come at some point. But, you know, it's depend on the capacity in the source market and the capacity here, you know, in airports and, you know, in Jamaica itself to manage it. But I welcome the announcement if that is so, because is that what he said? Because then I think it, you know, it's, it's just a, just a natural kind of, um, natural kind of, you know, you know, follow-up on where we were. You start with screening, you continue to explore and explore and explore and see how it can be done, so that you can, you actually can come up with a solution to address the testing question. Because testing is just one, one tool in that toolkit for the whole risk management approach to managing COVID, you know?
Mr. Distant, what about you?
Yes, Dion, and thanks for having, thanks for having me on. And like Keith, I just heard the announcement myself. The, but the view has been, and certainly a number of persons, a number of members of the business community would have raised a desire to see more testing. So I think that this announcement, albeit just hearing it and not hearing the specifics around it. But certainly, I expect that this announcement is a welcome announcement, certainly. From the chamber's perspective, we do welcome it. We, many of us would have liked to have seen more testing taking place. We do believe though that the process around screening and utilizing screening to determine who gets testing is an approach, and again, a risk-based approach, but certainly it is an approach that would help us to, would have helped us to move forward in bringing persons in and opening up, reopening the economy and reopening our shores. The view I would add to the conversation though is, as we are, as we begin to do more testing, it's just about ensuring that our hospital system, our health system is able to manage any increase that comes as a result of more persons coming in. And we'd have heard on a number of occasions from both the Prime Minister and the Minister of Health, that that is a primary concern, certainly ensuring that as we manage the protocols around screening and as we manage the protocols around testing, that we can actually handle any increase in volumes that come to our health system. So certainly welcome news, certainly like to hear a little bit more about it and see how it unfolds.
Yes, well, our understanding in fact is that some of the protocols and some of the arrangements in relation to the new policy are still being worked out. So we'll certainly stay on top of that and let our listeners and our viewers know as soon as that information is available. And so a lot of the questions from, in relation to tourism, had in fact related to the fact that the government had said that there would not have been testing. So we await that developing story. So let me go to a question from Jamel now, who is asking, how sure are we? Here's a kind of, I guess you'd say we're on the horns of a dilemma. Jamel is saying, how sure are we that the economy won't, reopening the economy won't attract another outbreak, especially with cases going down? Daryl Vaz?
So, so, Dion, that's an excellent, excellent question. And truth is that we are on uncharted waters. So it is very fluid and changes can come, I mean, almost minutely, if not hourly. As it relates to this specific question, we have to be just very careful to manage the risk. Because if there is a spike as a result of reopening the economy, then the government has to do what is right. And that is to scale it back, which is what we don't want. Because we want to just continually open the economy to the point of where we can manage it, manage the risk, and of course, make sure that the increased cases are minimal. Will that happen? Nobody knows. And that in itself is the big question. But on the other hand, as the Prime Minister has said, we are doing this incrementally. We're doing it two weeks by two weeks as we have been doing from March. And that is to be able to assess and monitor and make the tweaking that may be necessary. So truth be told, you are damned if you do, damned if you don't. If you don't open the economy, then people won't die from COVID, they'll die from hunger. And vice versa. So if I must be very honest, it is very difficult to be in the position of government. And as a cabinet minister, I can tell you, it is, I mean, consuming us. Because obviously, we don't have all the answers. But what I can say is that we're going to watch it and we tweak it as is necessary. And if it is that we have to pull back on some of the stuff that we're doing to reopen the economy in the interest of the health of the people, then that's what we have to do and beyond. But it's, it's not a easy, it's not a easy road and it's not a easy challenge.
I'd love to have our other guest respond to Jamel's question as well, but I'm at a break. So let me go to the break and then we come back. So remember, you can send, still send in your questions throughout the programme. It's 3810072, 3810072. Or you can tweet us as well and use the hashtag #TVJTownHall. So stay tuned, we'll be right back.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching. Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Hi everybody! Now the economy is reopening, CSEC and CAPE students are back at school and tourists are coming back. There are so many questions about how all this is going to work in the era of COVID-19. So that's a focus of our upcoming RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall Meeting. That's going to be taking place Thursday at 8:35 PM. So we want you to send in your questions, video questions as well, to 3810072. That's 3810072. If you're sending in a video question, please keep your phone like this. Do not send us video questions like this. So remember, horizontal, not vertical. Send in also your comments and your responses that you want us to include in the town hall. We look forward to see.
Thank you so much for staying with us. We continue in our series with our RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall Meetings. And today, we're talking about the reopening of everything, I guess you could call it. And our guests with us online, we have Minister Without Portfolio, the Office of the Prime Minister, Daryl Vaz. We also have State Minister and the Ministry of Education, Youth and Information, Alanda Terlong. And with us as well, the President of the Private Sector Organisation of Jamaica, Keith Duncan. And Lloyd Distant, President of the Jamaica Chamber of Commerce. So we're going to be diving into some education questions in just a moment. But just before that, Jamel had asked that question about reopening the economy and suppose we see another outbreak? So I'd love Mr. Duncan and Mr. Distant to comment on that. Mr. Duncan, you first?
Sure, I think, you know, as time has passed, you know, since our first case in about March, I think we have built the knowledge, some knowledge of the virus and how it works and how it operates. And we have seen, you know, how, you know, we've built the capacity within the Ministry of Health and Wellness. We've built out the capacity in terms of our ventilators, we've built out capacity in terms of our ICUs. We have built out capacity in terms of contact tracing. So we have built up the capacity to be able to manage a surge. We have seen ourselves move from management of, you know, using like almost a blunt tool, like locking down the entire parish of St Catherine when we had the workplace cluster outbreak, to now where we're able to, when St Mary emerged, we're able to, the Ministry of Health and the Government of Jamaica was able to move in and really target the communities and really contain that cluster. And we have seen us move from where we had a workplace outbreak with Alarica, when we locked down, you know, a significant part of the BPO sector, to now where, under the leadership of Minister Vaz and Gloria Henry, BPIAJ, you know, President, they have done an excellent job in getting the protocols in place for, for the BPO sector, global services sector right across the board, till we can open that sector and feel comfortable about it. So we're building out the capacity, we're building the protocols. Where Jamaicans are now starting to adjust their behaviours, you know, and we have, you know, we're Jamaicans, must remain disciplined. And they must wear their mask and they must sanitise and they must do all that. But we have built the capacity, the Ministry of Health and Wellness and the Government of Jamaica, they have done a really good job, did the know-how. And I think we're prepared, because if you increase your population of the new population, you're going to have, you're going to have a surge here or there. And you have to be able to react quickly, move in quickly, neutralise it quickly, contain it quickly. And I think we have built the capacity.
What about you, Mr. Distant? What do you think, that kind of horns of a dilemma, as I was saying?
So the dilemma that will come upon us is really, I believe, is and can be managed by the government's approach and the Ministry of Health's approach to how we react. So the front end of this is around data. And, you know, having sat in a number of meetings with the COVID resilient task force, or subcommittee of the task force, I'm confident to see the kind of data that is being gathered. I mean, Keith mentioned some of the things that are used, the contact tracing, the testing, the profiling. So as we see a spike and tracking the trends, as we see a spike, we're better able to determine the kind of actions that need to be taken. And what we've seen over the last couple of months is that the government has used a number, the Ministry of Health has used a number of different methodologies. I mean, it's like they have a toolkit to say, in this instance, implement this, in this instance, let's do that. So the ability of our authorities to look at, again, to parse the information, parse the data, determine, are we likely to see a spike or is a spike about to happen? Is there a surge coming on? What's the steps that we use or which element of the toolkit do we pull out to actually cauterise any continued growth or surge? And then for us to pull back and to restart. As Minister Vaz indicated, we hope that it doesn't get, come to the extent to where we may need to consider re-closing our borders. Again, it's all fluid, don't know how it's going to end. But I believe if we remain true to task, utilizing the data to understand the growth, continue our testing protocols, continue assessing the market, assess what is taking place, and then to implement whatever steps are necessary, we certainly should be able to stay on top of this scenario situation, certainly not pressuring our health system.
Let me bring in Mr. Terlong here. You know, Mr. Terlong, we have so many questions on education. I'm going to have to make sure it doesn't, it doesn't take over the entire programme. But let me start with this question from Delmar. With the reopening of school and students being out in public, what will happen? If there's a COVID case at school, would everybody, all those children, have to be in quarantine?
Alright, good night Dion. Again, good night to our fellow panelists and of course, good night to our viewers or listeners out there in the media land. Alright, well, first of all, again, we are also guided by the measures implemented by the Ministry of Health and Wellness. And so certainly, if there is a second outbreak of COVID- And so certainly, if there is a second outbreak of Covid, I mean, God forbid, we all hope that there isn't. But of course, contingencies have been put in place and certainly will be guided by the decision of the Ministry of Health and will also be guided by the decision of the Cabinet. And I am certain that in all instances, as the government has displayed, that the health and wellness of our students and our teachers, that that will be given primary consideration.
Okay, here is just one more question. Let me take one more text question from John, who is asking, what about grade 10 students going into grade 11? That's fourth to fifth, saying much of the syllabus hasn't been completed and it will be so unfair. John is saying for the grade 10 students, what's going to be happening with them?
All right, I'm not sure what John means by, in terms of unfair, but certainly, by all indications...
Probably in relation to coming exams and the kind of, the extent of the workload that they're going to have to catch up with.
All right, well, remember, Dion, that the CXC program is a two-year program for grades 10 and grade 11. So it's a two-year program. What would have happened is that by the middle of March, before the Prime Minister announced the emergency measures and the closure of schools for the week commenced in March 13, that many schools, or most of our schools, they would have completed most of the syllabus. Certainly, in the region of between 80 and 90% of the respective syllabi would have been completed. Remember that we would have gone off on the Easter holiday, et cetera. We would have come back and then we would have been preparing the students for the end-of-year exams, which are not going to be happening. So all students, as we have indicated, they will progress to the next level. In cases where, we have indicated also, we'll be using class tests, homework, coursework, and stuff like that to determine how forward, well, to determine how the students move forward. If there are students who, based on a determination between the teachers and so forth, the parents will be called in, they will meet with them and discuss whether or not those students will not be allowed to move on. And this is for all grades. But certainly, as is the intention, is for all students to move upward. And where there are extreme circumstances, then a consultation with the parents to make requisite determinations thereafter.
Let me just say to our viewers and our listeners, you can call in. So you can call in if you have a question, you want to get in. Our numbers are 7332461, and those numbers go up to six. So that's 8767332124, I beg your pardon, 61. And the numbers go up to six. So we welcome your calls as well. And of course, you can continue to text us and WhatsApp us all throughout the program. Let me see, this sounds like a question for Daryl Vaz. I want to know if people go and get lockup, Mr. Vaz, in the cases of people in schools, if stipulations in relation to the various orders and regulations for Covid aren't being adhered to. This was from Jamel.
Well, Jamel, popular to ninety?
You know, everybody who sent in questions had like four and five.
Dion, let me be frank and honest. The truth is, the success of our fight against Covid is going to be dependent on the behaviour and the discipline of every single solitary Jamaican. This is not a government thing. We can only set the guidelines and encourage everybody to adhere to them. But there's no possible way that the government, whether it be the Ministry of Health, whether it be the security forces, whether it be the Prime Minister, can monitor and police the measures that we have put in. So when the Prime Minister or the Ministry of Health say that if you come to Jamaica as a Jamaican national, there's a stay-at-home order, what they are really saying is that it is best that you stay at home for the 14 days to make sure that if you are infected, you don't carry that infection out. Truth be told, how do you patrol or police that level of the population? Yes? So I want to make it clear that we as government really don't have all the answers. And that's why you will see changes happen from hour to hour, minute to minute, and day to day. Because we are in uncharted waters. And I just want to say that if everybody just plays their part by being smart and doing what we are suggesting, then I think we will have a better chance of reopening without a spike than having a spike and having to either lockdown communities, lockdown parishes, or go back to the curfews and the weekend curfews, et cetera, which is what we don't want to do. Because the people, as you heard them speak, all of whom you have interviewed so far, are of the opinion that the economy needs to reopen. And we're going to reopen it in phases. And as I said before, as we have been doing two weeks by two weeks, and we reassess. And I am confident in my Jamaican people that we will be able to manage it with the help and the good work of the Ministry of Health. And basically, in three months, we will be saying to ourselves, we have done it, as we have always done if we unite.
Does that mean no sanctions for schools or universities?
There are sanctions, there are people that have been arrested for having parties and all different sort of things. It has been minimal in my estimation. But as I said before, I mean, the truth of the matter is that when you're fighting Covid and crime and all the other social issues that we are facing as a country, as a result of Covid, we are overwhelmed. We are absolutely overwhelmed. The only thing that helps us now is prayers and discipline.
Well, let's go to the phone lines. We have Jerome, who is calling in from Westmoreland. Hi Jerome, what's the question? Okay, we'll get back to Jerome as soon as we sort that out. Mr. Terrellong, a question from Yolande. What about the reopening of schools at the basic and primary level? Because we've been dealing so far with CSEC and Cape, what about basic and primary levels?
All right, so the opening of schools at this juncture, when we're looking at our grade 11 and our grade 12 students, this is now the test run to guide us in September. So we've also developed an educational manual that speaks to the emergencies, the emergency measures for school as relates to Covid. And that document has been developed and certainly we'll be making change to the document based on the advice of the Ministry of Health. The document was also done in consultation with other agencies, international agencies, and based on different modules created by UNESCO, UNICEF, the World Bank. There's also an attached document from the ILO, because obviously, you know, we have our teachers to protect as well. So it's a comprehensive document that details the way forward. We will be looking at the same measures in terms of masks for our students, masks for teachers. We're looking at social distancing in terms of that six feet space between the, within the classrooms. We're also going to be looking at safe zones. And Dion, this is very important. Because we've had many persons, they've messaged me on Twitter, they've been asking about the mask and will students be expected to wear masks for eight hours a day, et cetera? We are looking at all schools, they should establish what we call a safe zone. A safe zone, Dion, is where the students can gather in very, very small groups, outdoor, and they can comfortably remove their masks. And they can speak, they can relax for a bit before rejoining the next class or the next session. Certainly, we've indicated as it relates to cleaning of all handrails, cleaning of doorknobs, included in a manual provision that doors, where possible, doors must be left open to minimize the number of persons touching the door handles. The constant cleaning of surfaces, you know, by relevant staff members. We've also looked at, and which should be implemented as well, temperature checks at the schools, at the point of entering to the schools, temperature checks and also sanitization stations. Students will have the option of either, depending on the school and their model, their internal model, students will be able to wash their hands before entering the school compound, or they'll be given sanitizers to clean their hands as well. All schools should also have what we call sick days or an isolation area. So in the event a temperature reading is above 37.5 degrees, then certainly those students, they will have a second chance because they might be coming out of the sun, et cetera. So that might cause an increase in the temperature. They'll be allowed a few minutes just to cool down. Another temperature check is done. If the temperature is above 37.5 degrees, then those students will be taken to the isolation area. And thereafter, they'll be seen by the nurse and measures will be taken thereafter, for parents' guardians to be contacted, et cetera, or for them to be taken either home or to the hospital, depending on the circumstances. So certainly, the health and safety protocols are standard. In the early childhood institutions, we're also looking at a child-to-teacher ratio. So take, for example, the age group 3 to 6. If I'm seeing the document in front of me, the age group 3 to 6, I believe, will have, let's say, one teacher to maybe six or eight children and so forth. So there's a specific ratio for zero to 12 months, 13 months to 35 months, and then 35 months, and then three years to six years. That is a model that we've developed.
All right, hold that thought for me, Mr. Terrellong, just a moment. I know there's other aspects of that we want to come to, but I did just want to see if we could bring back Jerome before I had to go to the break. Jerome, are you there?
Yes, Dion, I'm here.
Jerome?
Yes, I'm hearing you.
Go ahead with your question, Jerome.
Okay, my question is, Covid-19 has changed the landscape in terms of our education.
Okay, let's go to the break and we'll see if we sort that out when we come back. Stay with us and remember, send in those questions. Text us, you can WhatsApp us, you can tweet us, we're back in a moment.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching. Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with the cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Covid-19 tip. Protect yourself and others from getting sick by washing your hands after coughing or sneezing, when caring for the sick, before, during, and after you prepare food, before eating, after toilet use, when hands are visibly dirty, and after handling animals or animal waste.
Hi everybody. Now, the economy is reopening. CSEC and Cape students are back at school and tourists are coming back. There are so many questions about how all this is going to work.
Most of the times, they're coming for a vacation of two weeks. You know, it's unrealistic for quarantine them for two weeks.
In terms of the Covid situation and the complaints that they say they would have offered, we realize taxi drivers are on the back bench.
We glad the school opened, can't be pitney them to take them CXC and in the country have to really move on.
They have to ensure that all who are coming get tested because you don't want what you lose. You know, the first time make a gain on it, then you're going to end up and lose it back.
Thank you so much for staying with us as we continue with our RGR Gleaner Group Town Hall. And today we're talking about the reopening of everything. We're calling it the reopening of Jamaica. So we have Janice online. Janice, go ahead for me.
Hello?
Hi, go right ahead with your question for me, Janice.
Hello?
Go right ahead with your question for me, Janice. Okay, not the...
Hello? All right, so for the tertiary students, I haven't been hearing much about them. So I wanted to know, what is it for September? Will it be the same as the secondary students?
You're asking if for the tertiary students, if what will be the same?
Right, so is it that we're going to, how is it that we're going to go through with school? Because...
Okay, all right, I think I got the gist. I think I got the gist of that. Mr. Terrellong, so the question there at the tertiary level, how does back-to-school work for them?
All right, well, back-to-school will work for them in a similar manner. Again, the recommendations are that are for social distancing, generally wearing a mask, et cetera. But now, where online education can continue, the recommendation is that those students and teachers, et cetera, that the online learning will continue for them. Naturally, Dion, each institution, including our different tertiary institutions, they will also be able to adapt different modules that will better suit their institution, their layout, and their students. So it could very well be that, let's say, a physics lecturer determines that, well, all right, for this module or this part of the program, we can do it online. Simple by virtue of the capabilities on campus and also by virtue of the students' ability to access devices and internet, et cetera. So they are encouraged to do that portion of the lesson online, et cetera. And again, for those students who have to come on campus, standard guidelines within our educational model. And of course, we've asked our schools to be able to devise and implement measures that will suit their specific circumstances as well.
Okay, now you had mentioned something a little bit earlier, I want to go back to. Because in the previous segment, when you were talking about the classrooms and how those would be set up. And I have a question here from Sandra, who sounds as if she must be a teacher. Because Sandra says the standard classroom size is 22 feet by 22 feet, which at the current guidelines of 36 square feet means the classrooms can host 12 students plus a teacher. How do you envisage that working come September?
All right, so Dion, in a short while, or at the convenient time, HM Samuda will make a further announcement as well as, well, having discussed the matter further with Cabinet and certainly discussing the matter further with our stakeholders. However, what we envision is that the relevant protocol will be put in place, either for additional arrangements to be made to school the students, so either at the school or perhaps such other location. And again, remember that there is a thrust for the online education. So we're still considering and tweaking different models. As Minister Vaz indicated earlier, you know, we are in the state of a crisis and there are no perfect solutions, Dion. So what we are doing is we're working together to perfect the solutions that have been devised so far and we'll tweak it based on discussions with the Ministry of Health and of course, always guided by the Prime Minister and Cabinet. What I will say though is that, you know, we have to be very optimistic about it. And what I've seen over the last four days, having inspected several schools, is that, you know, the teachers are excited. They, you know, they wanted to come back and they wanted to help to prepare their students for the exams. Our students, you know, I have to say, big up to our students, Dion, they have proven to be the real superheroes in Jamaica at their age and having to deal with exams and school and to balance the size, to balance the, what you call the psychosocial impact of life in a pandemic at their age. It is phenomenal, so I really want to big them up. We also have a program for guidance counselors, Dion, where we're encouraging, you know, I mean, guidance counselors to speak to the students when we get back to school in September. Again, more details will be made on that because we do understand that when students have been deprived of the classroom and that face-to-face interaction, that again, you know, we need to make sure that that psychosocial aspect of it is looked at. But the relevant announcement, it is due course.
All right, we have Shara online, Shara?
Hello?
Hi, go ahead with your question. Go right ahead with your question, Shara.
Okay, I'd like to find out if the jam Covid app is completely done away with for... I'd like to find out if the Jam COVID app is completely done away with for after June 15, after the revolt, Dion?
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Vaz, can you answer that? She's asking if the Jam COVID app is still to be used.
No, Jam COVID, Jam COVID has been upgraded and Jam COVID will continue for all persons wishing to enter Jamaica, whether you are a national or a foreigner. It will be a prerequisite that you have to go on Jam COVID and there will be certain health questions and immigration questions that will be asked and required before you will be able to get permission to land in Jamaica. So that will continue.
All right. We have another video question, so let's go to this video question.
Being asked to do more. Are there any measures being put in place to assist them?
All right, that question from Daniel Francis. Mr. Terlong, that's for you, assistance for teachers.
Yes, all right, thank you, thank you, Daniel. You know, and again, that's a very important question because we do respect and appreciate the work that our teachers have been doing. Certainly, recently, we had a presentation of 25,000 tablets that were received as a part of the negotiations with our teachers. So those tablets are here and they are being distributed based on the certain criteria so that our teachers will have those. We also received 1,000 tablets from Digicel last week and those tablets will be provided to our students on path and our students with, well, our students with disabilities as well. Again, remember, I've indicated that what the new norm going forward is a reliance on online education. And one of the things we recognise as a government and as a ministry is that it's important that in times of pandemic or conflict or whatever the crisis, that the education of our children or for young kings and queens is not interrupted. So we do recognise internet capabilities and internet access as a right. We recognise also that we've been partnering with Mr. David Williams and Hertie and ensure that...
Okay, we're hearing you, but I can see you're having a little difficulty. But just to say another time, we're going to have to talk more about this internet capability with some of the holy pop, we were hearing you with some of the holy pop popping down, we're seeing, we're going to have to be talking seriously about this issue of internet capability. But let me go to another video question on the whole issue of teachers.
Before COVID, the education system was being negatively affected by a high teacher population, primarily because of the shortage of teachers. Given the need now for social distancing, what plans are being made to ensure adequate teacher coverage? For example, flexi hours, going back to the shift system or hiring crew-trained teachers?
Okay, so that was Tonyan. And before I hand back over to the minister to answer, we have another education question from Jada in Westmoreland. So let's take that. Go ahead, Jada, go ahead with your question.
What's your opinion on children going to school with our amount of cases since the children left school on our first case in Jamaica?
Okay, you need to turn off your TV or your radio, whatever you have in the background, Jada, we're hearing you, just ask your question. Okay, I think I got the gist of it. So Mr. Terlong, two questions there for you, one about the teacher shortage and then Jada, I think, was asking, what do you think about kids going back to school with the number of cases having increased so much?
All right, so let me, all right, so as it relates to teachers, let me go back to teacher assistance just real quick, just to indicate that online training for teachers, we have already engaged several partners. From the onset of COVID, we engage our partners, Dion. The first batch of teachers were, I believe, approximately 180 teachers who were initially trained on our online training platform. More teachers have since been trained and more teachers will be trained to carry out the curriculum online, et cetera. So in terms of teacher training and assistance, again, we would have partnered with Digicel and other providers to give credit to our teachers to assist those who would have been using WhatsApp capabilities, et cetera. We will be hiring more pre-trained teachers. So again, you'll get further update on that, but we do recognise the need to hire more pre-trained teachers. I would also recommend, Dion, to the youth of Jamaica who are leaving universities, they have their first degree, et cetera, and they can actually get employment within the education sector. Please apply to the Young Kings, that they are young, to our youth of Jamaica. You can work within the education sector for a year or two years. If you want to stay, again, there are provisions that you could get further in further training and a certificate programme, et cetera, whether at churches or one of our training institutions. So please, there will be opportunities for you all. And as it relates to, again, we'll be providing more tablets. We have another 40,000 tablets for our students. Students will be distributed, will be receiving tablets based on the need. So we'll be looking at our path, students, first, Dion, to ensure that those households that do not have the requisite device, that they have the device in their homes to allow for the online education. Because we do realise that was a fact and a major complaint throughout the last three months. Children going back to school in September, again, you know, the next step of Jamaica, like with COVID, is all about personal responsibility, you know, and we expect all our stakeholders, which includes our parents and our children in the education sector, to play their part. So I don't have a difficulty with students going back to the classroom. Based on our reports from the Ministry of Health, the discussions held with Cabinet, et cetera, it is safe to do so, provided all the requisite guidelines are in fact followed. And from what we've seen this week, Dion, and to all our listeners, our young people, they have made the mask very fashionable, they are wearing them, they are abiding by the rules, and so I don't foresee a difficulty.
Yes, all branded mask and school motto and school colours and all kind of fancy stuff going on. You know, we're gonna have to ask you back perhaps for an entire programme, we have so many education questions, but we want to get to some questions about the economy. So let's go to the break and then we come back.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching. Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with a cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill. Let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
COVID-19 tip. Protect yourself and others from getting sick by washing your hands after coughing or sneezing, when caring for the sick, before, during and after you prepare food, before eating, after toilet use, when hands are visibly dirty, and after handling animals or animal waste. Hi, everybody.
My name is Junior Scott. I'm a taxi man who applied the route from Weston to Negril. Our main concern is we haven't heard anything in regards to the government pay package for taxi man. We are not hearing anything from that and we have filled out the application form and that is one of our main concerns.
Well, my greatest concern is, you know, the grant from the government which is not coming forth in terms of the set cash. You know, the first payment, maybe about a month ago, we're at the end of June where they promised us, you know, that we'll be get three payment by the end of June and, you know, it just one, so I don't call it set cash anymore, I call it dead cash. Because by the time people get that, or by the time it come in the account, people already dead.
Thank you so much for staying with us as we continue with our RGR Gleaner Group Vertile Town Hall, looking at the reopening. And that question, let me put that one to Daryl Vaz. Daryl Vaz? People, they must say...
So you would have seen last night, late into the night, that finally the supplementary estimate was approved after a bit of a delay. And therefore, I'm expecting that those payments will be made between now and the end of the month. And I'm hoping that my friend that just came on a while ago doesn't die before it comes. But I can say to you that definitively, there is, there will be a release of funds based on the supplementary that will take care of the Ministry of Finance's care package, stimulus package that they announced, and of course, obviously, the ministries and agencies of government will be also get well-needed funding. So just hold on, hold tight until the end of June for me.
All right, you heard that viewers and listeners. All right, we have a caller from Spanish Town. Go ahead, caller.
Yeah, good night, Dion.
Hi, Mark, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, I have a question from Mr. Terlong. My question is, the primary schools are not equipped with school nurses. What are school administrators to do when they are in a situation where students have an elevated temperature?
All right, thank you so much, Mark. Mr. Terlong?
The school nurse, again, Dion, the manual stipulates, the manual stipulates very, very clearly that there must be an isolation area. So what we've seen at some of the schools, so take, for example, I toured one school this week, Dion, and the principal and the teachers, they used a room for cosmetology and they have transformed that room for cosmetology into the isolation area.
Remember, you're talking there about it's the high schools that are in session now. The primary schools tend to be a lot more confined in terms of space and all that kind of thing. So you're saying he's not that, and he's talking specifically about primary school?
Yeah, right, it's the same model. So we expect our primary schools, and I remember, we'll be working with them, the Ministry of Health will also be working with them, the regional nurses will also come in and they will do the inspection to make sure that the isolation area is properly set up and that all the sanitisation and health measures are followed. I want Jamaicans to be rest assured, as a government, as a ministry, we respect and appreciate your views, we will listen, we can all work out whatever things there might be together, but be rest assured that the health and safety of our young kings and queens and our teachers and administrators remain paramount importance to all of us.
All right, we have another caller, Demar. Hi, Demar, what's your question? Kemar, I beg your pardon? Go right ahead. Okay, while we're waiting for Kemar, we'll sort that out.
Sorry, let me ask a question right away. I'm asking, you know, with increasing cases from the US, the projections show that up to September, we might see increases of COVID-19. What's the expectation in terms of tourists coming from those areas? And I mean, what if tourism really isn't the answer at this point? What other revenue streams could the government look at in terms of, you know, stimulating the economy because tourism is significantly impacted?
Well, major question there, Daryl Vaz. One, the numbers are going to be coming in in terms of possibly having COVID and also should we be looking at other industries, other sources of income for Jamaica?
So tourism obviously is the largest earner and obviously, with whatever other industries that we have, we have to make sure to try and make sure that they stay the course. There's nothing to replace tourism, so let's just put that on the table. In relation to the possible spikes, that is always a possibility. And truth be told, obviously, we are looking at the figures as it relates to the amount of positive cases that we have had, which is approximately 3% of the, of 3% positive in relation to the amount of testing that we have done. We are hoping that that can stick and stay, but obviously, there's no guarantee on that and that's why we have to be so cautious in relation to how we observe the protocols and as a government, what we do in terms of opening the borders, which I suspect is why the announcement was made today in relation to testing. And of course, as we know, as it relates to testing, that's the best that we can do, but it's not a guarantee. So it's, again, as I said before, it's going to be reliant on all of us to do what we need to do and to be as responsible as we can, not only in terms of how we operate on a day-to-day, but obviously, the tourism industry, which has come out with a very, very strong set of protocols that have been well thought out and commented worldwide. So again, with a little prayer, we'll make it through.
I'd love to hear from Mr. Distant and Mr. Duncan on that because I've heard a lot of people asking that question. Has COVID exposed a major vulnerability in our economy in terms of our dependence on tourism and is it time to move away from that? Mr. Distant, you first?
So Dion, it's a point that many of us in the private sector have raised on a number of occasions. So whilst we appreciate what tourism does for our economy, the diversification and expansion of how we actually earn and how our economy works, certainly something that we have been driving forth in pressing for businesses, government and all of Jamaica to pay more attention to. So you've heard us talk a lot about productive capacity, about for export. And what we have found as a result of the COVID crisis is that a number of our businesses have actually begun to do that pivot. Thanks for the word, Keith. But they've begun to do that pivot around how they refocus their business. And so they're identifying gaps in other economies and there are no manufacturing and producing to fill those gaps overseas. Those are the kinds of things that we need to see more of and begin doing more of within Jamaica. Now, yes, we all accept that the contribution of tourism to our economy is so significant as Minister Vaz indicated, we're not going to replace it overnight. And certainly, that industry is not going to come back to pre-COVID levels in two or three months, it's going to be over an extended period. So as that takes place, what's going to be very important is for us to identify those other things that will first stir economic activity locally. So release, relaxing restrictions, reopening businesses and actually getting the economy moving and driving forward once again will ensure that some of that economic activity takes place. But we've got to look for trade or export opportunities to grow our income as a country in a different direction.
Mr. Duncan, want to follow up on that for me?
Mute.
Think you need to take off mute off your computer, sir.
Oh, it's off, no, sorry about that, sorry about that.
That's okay, ear of Zoom.
Yes. So where we are as a country now, you know, for the last 20, 30 years, we have had an average growth rate of about 1%, right? Jamaica has underperformed as an economy. The productivity of our people have really, you know, productivity has declined for Jamaica. Now, we really need to make some big transformational moves and not incremental moves that we've been making over the last 10, 20 years, right? We now need to really focus on the areas that's going to increase our productivity. If we're going to focus on agriculture, then we need to focus on water. If we're going to focus on increasing our BPO industry and get more deep value added into global services, then we need to focus on broadband and connectivity, you know what I mean? So what, those are the areas that we need to focus on. If we're going to become a digital economy, then we need to have a digital ID, we need to have needs. So let us stop dragging our feet as a country on some of these critical areas that are going to enhance the productivity of our country. We're gonna have to train our people, if we're serious about e-commerce, then, and, um, then we're gonna have to train up our people in terms of transitioning and re-skilling our people, you know, human capital transformation to move, to, 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 so that we can become more productive if, more productive in our capital. Because if you have good water supply, you have irrigation, then you can get good agriculture. Then you can, um, you can start about increasing linkages. Then you can talk about import substitution, you know what I mean? So therefore, there are some key areas, agriculture, manufacturing, digital, global services. Minister Vaz has been, I mean, driving that area. 600 million, 500, 600 million of earnings and we can hit a billion dollars in a couple of years. We need, that diversification is, you know, agriculture being at the base of our economy and water supplying that is just some key things that we need to do to really increase productivity of our country and really increase growth.
All right, let me go down to Western Jamaica, Dwight online in Montego Bay. Hi Dwight, what's your question?
My question is to the Minister Vaz. Me and we have been told that we're gonna get a general grant as, as member due to J. Carl Maxi. No member received a fund. And we're here to talk about set cash and all the other person who receive. No member from the J. Carl Maxi or due to in, in, in the West Coast receive one cent.
All right, thank you Dwight. Mr. Vaz?
Uh, as I said earlier to the, to the earlier, um, caller, the truth is that just, just last night, late last night, we were able to pass supplementary estimates, which were, as a result of obviously the pandemic. Uh, so that would have definitely caused a delay. And I'm confident that those persons who have filled out properly the requisition and the supply, the, the relevant information that as a result of last night's activity in parliament, that over the next few weeks, you will definitely see. The commitment of the government is there, the funding was earmarked and you will get the fun, you will get the funds in the, in the, in the, in the, in the upcoming weeks. Sorry for the delay, but that's how the, 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 the system operates, obviously, in terms of, um, I've been, I've been to go back to parliament to realign the budget.
All right, we have a question from social media. Please explain the corridor and how this will affect the tourists visiting attractions outside of the corridor. How will it affect or translate to Jamaicans returning to their homes? Well, let's just take this clip from the Tourism Minister Ed Bartlett, who was speaking at a press briefing earlier today.
We have established a special corridor, which is a prescribed geographic area that will be the area that we begin operating as a tourism facility over the next two weeks, starting on the 15th. And the corridor will follow the main road from Negril all the way to Port Antonio. And it will embrace all the properties on what is called the seaward side of that highway. On the 15th, we will have seven flights that will come in. And during the period, 15th to the 30th, we're expecting to have about 70 flights into Jamaica overall. Uh, that will bring us somewhere in the region of about, uh, five, five to 6,000 visitors over that period.
Just to answer the, just to answer the question as it relates to attractions. So for the first two weeks, the attractions will not be open. Um, and that is obviously because you want to contain the, the, the persons within a confined area. Um, but again, as I mentioned before, two, as Minister Bartlett said, two weeks. And if all goes according to plan and that we don't see despite that we are not expecting, then obviously, there will be further reopening and that will continue, I'm sure, down into July, into the end of July, to the, to the end of the summer. Where hopefully, we'll be in a position to be at least well-advanced in the reopening of the economy.
Okay, let's go to another break, thank you so much. And remember our phone line, 7332461, those numbers go up to 6, 7332461, all the way up to 6. We're back right after this.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on onewespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching. Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on onewespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with a cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health center and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill, let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
COVID-19 tip. Protect yourself and others from getting sick by washing your hands after coughing or sneezing, when caring for the sick, before, during and after you prepare food, before eating, after toiletries use, when hands are visibly dirty and after handling animals or animal waste.
When he's going to him, uh, uh, free up the church from using the mask because the mask in the church has elderly, it's like it's stifling, so we cannot worship. So we'd like the Prime Minister, please to just let go of the masking at the church and just free up the church, make it for worship, God. Because you see, when we worship God, when the blessing, the prayer goes up, the blessing will come down.
Thank you so much for staying with us as we continue with our RJR Gleaner Group Vertile Town Hall, looking at the reopening of the economy, the reopening of everything. And Daryl Vaz, you hear the lady say, she won't go church and she won't worship without her mask. You're stopping her blessings and her prayers from going up.
I say, I say, we're from ourselves at the same time.
So what is it?
No singing, no singing, no singing, no choir in the church.
So for the foreseeable future though, the, the point is the masks are going to be, remain mandatory for the time being in church.
I, I, I would think that, that, that would be so. I mean, the truth is that, as I said, it's so fluid, I don't know, uh, depending on what, what happens after we reopen and how the, how the, how the, how the cases are. I'm sure there'll be some relaxation at some point, but it's a, it's a wait-and-see game, eh?
You're saying work with it, work with it.
Work, work with the program for the me, for the meantime.
All right, here's another question, let's go to another video question.
I would like to ask the government, why is it taking so long to open the country? The country should open back already. And the curfew must abolish altogether now. And not from nine o'clock to 10 o'clock. But right round the clock, no curfew.
Curfew must abolish, the man said, Mr. Vaz, what? All right, we, we come back to Mr. Vaz in just a moment. Mr. Terrell though, what you say?
Now, I, I, I think that the, based on the directive of the Ministry of, of Health again and based on international guidelines today, I think the curfew serves a purpose. And so far, I mean, you know, when, when you talk outside of the Alarica case, um, Dion, you know, Jamaica would have been factoring somewhat, some, maybe, maybe, maybe about 250, 300 cases maximum outside of the Alarica cases. So I find that the curfew and the other measures imposed by the government, they're there to protect us. And again, going forward, the new normal, personal responsibility. I mean, telebridgeing and siting them for give a little space and also wear your mask because the life you save is not just your own.
Let's go to Stuart, who is in Montego Bay, Stuart?
Yes, good night Dion.
Yes sir.
Yes, um, for Terrell, Minister Terrell. Uh, those tablets that he mentioned, I, I presume they are for the primary and secondary. What about community colleges? Because you see, uh, the lecturers there have been using their personal equipment and they have started to crash. And we don't know what is going to happen in September. I will listen for your answer.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Terrell, come to the community colleges.
All right, well Dion, I can get back to you on that. However, at this juncture, the, the tablets are teachers within the public sector, the general public sector school system. They are a part of the wage negotiations and they are a part of that tablet distribution, the initial one that I spoke about earlier. Um, but what I will say though, is that as it relates to, just as a, as a tag on, for, for schools that, that, that had difficulties with the internet service, um, with the provision of internet service, based on our new contract with, um, ready TV etcetera, 100 schools that never had internet, um, connections, they will be getting, they, they'll be provided with internet by virtue of the satellite provisions for their schools and thereafter, um, wifi hotspots can also be run throughout those communities that also have a difficulty. Two of those schools have since been, um, have since received satellite. Bullby Primary out in Saint Thomas and I think it's, um, and one of our schools out in Westmoreland as well. So we do recognize the difficulty and we're moving full speed ahead to get internet service for all our children and teachers.
All right, I have a question I need to put to our other guests. Phyllis is asking about the workplace. What kind of training is available to support workplaces and help them prescreen and test employees upon returning to work? And what will the physical workplaces look like to accommodate physical distancing? Mr. Duncan?
But you know, um, the protocols, I think their, um, protocols are being developed by, um, by sector-by-sector approach. And, um, in terms of the workplace, you'd be looking at, um, you know, what are the activities that can take place in the workplace? You know, I'm working on a shift system, so therefore, we're encouraging, um, we're encouraging, um, you know, um, employers and employees to look, to really look, um, look at the flexi work, um, you know, in terms of now, you know, a shift system, um, reducing the amount of people in the workspace by, you know, into, by introducing the shift system. By also in, in, in terms of your space, your physical space, at least 36 square feet around you, that, um, for, um, physical distancing. Uh, and, um, you know, in terms of even, um, how you go to lunch, it's, um, that would also be done through a shift system. So there, protocols are being developed very, very specific and detailed around how you exist in the workplace, you know? So you know, we saw it with the community bars, we saw it with churches, we're seeing it with, um, you know, with, with, with other sectors, we're seeing it came on a spark opening up and they will open up with their own, um, their own, um, protocols. So, uh, in terms of training, it will be the responsibility of the, one, the employer and the employees to take personal responsibility to get themselves trained up. You know what I mean, the protocols are on the Ministry of Health and Wellness website. Um, protocols have been, um, shared by the, I know the Jamaica Chamber of Commerce, the PSOJ, the JMEA, um, and all of these associations, you know, and, um, even small business would have, you know, been sharing protocols for, for businesses to get themselves up to speed.
Let me just go to another caller, Arlene in Kingston online. Arlene, go ahead. Hearing me, Arlene? Okay, I don't think Arlene is there, so Mr. Distant. Phyllis is also asking about whether we're going to see changes in some industries, for instance, restaurants, bars, club serving food. Are we going to see disposable menus, disposable dishes, disposable utensils? I, I, I know you're not necessarily a restaurateur, but are you seeing that kind of detail being brought into those kinds of discussions?
Dion, absolutely, I mean, it's a, it's a good question to ask. It's, uh, as Keith mentioned, a number of protocols have been designed and it has been involved, um, the players in the industry. So it's not protocols and guidelines that have come out, uh, uniquely or just done by the Ministry of Health. They've involved persons in the industry who are already taking a number of steps in transitioning the way that they actually operate. So disposable utensils, utilizing those in your operations, uh, how the business place is actually laid out and use restaurants as an example, both, uh, for those restaurants that are, would tend to serve indoors and those who tend to serve outdoors, the protocols associated with those. So, uh, there's quite a bit of specifics that have come out in terms of providing recommendations and guidelines. One of the things that we have actually spoken quite a bit about is one thing to actually develop the recommendations and guidelines, but actually, how do we ensure as an industry or as a business sector, um, that there's some monitoring and I would use the word policing, but it's probably more around enforcement to ensure that with these protocols in place, that we are ensuring those businesses in those specific sectors are actually taking the steps necessary to protect both their employees as well as their customers. Um, the, the previous question which asked about training, I just want to make mention as well of the fact that, um, a, a, a number of the BSOs, both ourselves, the private sector organization and others are actually putting on a number of seminars to sort of prepping both business owners as well as employees. I've seen where TPDEC, the tourism sector, actually has training sessions that they started on Monday and would be doing on an ongoing basis to ensure employees are prepared to go back into the workplace. There is quite a bit of work taking place on all those fronts.
Let's move over to Old Harbaugh, where Philip is online. Philip?
Good night, how are you?
Well, thank you, go ahead with your question.
Um, given the current situation, um, with social distances in the school and seeing that government schools are overpopulated, should we go back to, um, shift if it's even for temporary time? So we can facilitate the social distance within the school?
All right, so that's- Right, thank you so much Philip, let me go over to Saint Thomas, we have Karine with another question. Hi, go right ahead for me. Go ahead Karine. Turn your, turn your TV, turn your TV down, starting to sound like hotline. Turn your TV down for me, we're getting a feedback and then just go ahead with your question. Karine, you're on the line. All right. All right, Mr. Terrell, let me go to that question then. Philip is asking about the shift system.
So Dion, again, you know, there is, um, there's a general move away from the system. And naturally, you would have heard of, um, the Honorable Karasimova, he would have spoken in parliament recently and you'd have indicated that, um, the budget has been approved for the country, this would have been before COVID, that the budget would have been approved and would be systematically moving away over the next two or so years to move, to move away from the, move away from the shift system. Naturally with COVID etcetera, I mean, we hear the concerns about overcrowding, but again, we are putting measures in place that would afford for the safety of our young kings and queens whilst maintaining the relevant spaces within the school sector. Um, one of the things that we've been looking at, and again, these are just suggestions that we're looking at. Remember, there is no perfect solution, but we can perfect the solutions to be devised within the time of pandemic or crisis. We're looking, we're, we're looking at Dion at perhaps maybe staggered hours. All right, might just be that some students might come in at eight, some come in at nine. It might very well be that, you know, I'm just giving an idea, it's the potential models and at the relevant time, you know- And at the relevant time, you know, I mean, and I must say at this point Dion...
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Terlong, let me just go to the break, do a little bit of business. I promise we'll be coming back and, and coming to some more of those and more questions and more responses. So stay tuned as our RGR Gleaner Group Vertile Town Hall continues right after the break.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ, thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on onewespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it. Avoid close contact with anyone with a cold or flu-like symptoms. If you become ill, please visit your doctor or the nearest health centre and share your travel history. The flu and coronavirus can kill, let's protect each other. A message from the Ministry of Health and Wellness.
Covid-19 tip. Protect yourself and others from getting sick by washing your hands after coughing or sneezing, when caring for the sick, before, during and after you prepare food, before eating, after toilet use, when hands are visibly dirty and after handling animals or animal waste.
Hi everybody, now the economy is reopening, CSEC and CAPE students are back at school and tourists are coming back. There are so many questions about how all this is going to work in the era of Covid-19. So that's a focus of our upcoming RGR Gleaner Group Vertile Town Hall meeting. That's going to be taking place Thursday at 8:35pm. So we want you to send in your questions, video questions as well, to 3810072, that's not vertical. Send in also your comments and your responses that you want us to include in the town hall. We look forward to seeing you.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ, thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel.
With us our RGR Gleaner Group Vertile Town Hall continues, we're going until 10:30 because the lines are blowing up. We have so many questions coming in from all of you and we thank you so much. And I am going to start with a question from Twitter, Giovanni on Twitter. Darren Vaz, I think this one has to be for you. Giovanni on Twitter says, this pandemic has come when there is an election around the corner. What has the government done or will be doing to ensure we can vote and do so safely?
The only thing I can say to Giovanni is not to worry, you will get the opportunity to vote in due course. But you know that, that's above my pay grade.
I saw Mr. Terlong laughing to you now, so you know, Mr. Terlong.
Only because Darren said in due course, that's all, you know, that's all.
You know, if you all, if you all have anything you want to boss on the programme, that's fine, we'll take it. Um, let me come to Mr. Distant with this question from Archie, who is asking about flexible work and telework arrangements and asking whether, um, policies are being drafted, whether that institutions can follow. Um, he's also asking why the, why hasn't the government gone further than tell, okay, let me read it again, I beg your pardon. Work wise, where flexible and telework arrangements are concerned, why hasn't the government gone further than tell us what should exist, like drafting actual policies that institutions can follow? But before I ask Mr. Vaz to comment, I'll ask Mr. Distant to comment from your perspective in the Chamber of Commerce.
All right, so there is a flexi work act that already exists and it provides quite a bit of guidance around how employers and employees can operate within the gambit of facilitating either scheduled or shift work hours, uh, working remotely, uh, different times slots for persons to come into the workplace. So I, I do believe that the, what currently exists in terms of the act covers a significant portion of what we want to see. Now, going beyond that though, uh, over the past couple of months, we, we certainly would have been sharing with, um, a number of businesses. Again, ourselves, uh, the, uh, small business associations, JMEA, PSOJ, all the business associations, um, would have been sharing with the business community, um, both business community and employees in general, uh, what they should be thinking about or what they should consider in implementing flexi work arrangements, um, to enable a more efficient operation of their business and to facilitate, um, social distancing, so less people in the workplace and of course, taking care of their employees as well. A number of the protocols that have been developed actually speak to the flexi work arrangements and making recommendations along those lines. So I do believe that there is a robust set of recommendations in that regard.
You want to add anything, Mr. Vaz?
No, I'll support what, what, what Lloyd has said, just to say that coming out of this pandemic, I think you're, you're going to see a complete change in the way both public sector and private sector operates in terms of some of the, some of the new, the new measures that are going to be implemented, that are going to make us more efficient. Uh, and I think that, that, as I have always said, out of adversity comes opportunity and you're going to see quite a bit of opportunities that are going to come out in relation to the way that we do business and the types of businesses that we are going to do coming out on the heels of living with Covid.
Then we go to Delia, who is on the line in St. Catherine, Delia. Can you hear me, Delia? Okay, let me go to Jackie then, Jackie in Kingston, are you there Jackie?
Hello, good night.
Hi, go right ahead for me.
All right, my question is, um, when the tourists arrive in Jamaica and they are tested, where will they be? Will they be quarantined at home or will they be placed in a government institution until the results are ready?
All right, thank you so much for that Jacqueline. So she's asking, I think, Mr. Vaz, based on the protocol that has been in place so far with the Jamaicans coming in. So she's saying are the tourists likewise, um, going to be quarantined at home, quote unquote, or in some kind of facility?
So, so, so my, my understanding from this evening is that the, the, the locals returning will be, uh, will be requested to stay at home and those tourists that come in will be, uh, at the, at the, at the result that they are, they are staying pending the results of their tests.
Let me go to Delia now, Delia in St. Catherine, go ahead, Delia.
Yes, good night Dion and good night to your panel. Um, my question is to Mr. Terlong. Um, pertaining to the basic school slash ECC, um, early childhood education, we want to know if, um, our children will be wearing masks for the entire day? And if not, what are the, um, the, the, what is it that he's going to put in place? Two, um, should the basic school be getting, um, nurses to help along? Because you know that we have to mix and mingle with our babies every day and this, this is something that we cannot escape. Three, we want to know also the number of students, I heard him just brushed over, Mr. Terlong, brushed over, um, um, teacher ratio, you said six to eight, um, students to teacher. But we want to find out as well, what are the, um, implementation that you are putting in knowing that some of these schools are depending on the funds to pay the different bills and to pay their teachers? When these, um, when these numbers have cut down, where are we going to get the funds to pay our teachers? And the other question is, is there a tablet, is there some tablets in place for both the students and teachers? Thank you.
Boy, what a bag of questions, Delia. All right, let me break them down. Will basic school children have to wear masks all day? Let's start with that one. So Terlong?
Uh, yeah, um, so there, there is no mask, there is no mask recommendation for students two and younger.
Okay, basic school kids go up to six though, so what about those who are, say, two to six?
So again, the recommendation is that students who are two and younger, there's no requirement for those students to be wearing masks. Again, look, I mean, I have, you know Dion, I have a five-year-old and a four-year-old Dion and they will both be wearing masks to school in September. Again, remember that each school must have a safe zone. So, you know, I mean, we have to give our teachers a little bit of credit because our teachers have been working very, very hard. And again, they will know that, of course, when dealing with young children, that they are allowed to go within the safe zones so they can remove the masks, so they can speak comfortably etcetera, etcetera. One of the things we've also indicated is that in very small settings Dion, so if you have a classroom with, let's say, six children and they have the requisite space and the six feet etcetera, then if it is safe to do so and they're not moving about, they're stationary, then they could safely remove the mask. However, the teacher who is going to, let's say, move in throughout and interacting with the students individually, the teacher must be wearing a mask at all times.
Nurses, she asked about, basic school nurses?
If, um, if there are nurses assigned to basic schools?
If they're going to get.
Um, I, I cannot speak to that Dion, but I could double check with the Ministry of Health as well to see what protocols can be put in place. However, be respected, any school, remember, whether you're at work, school or anywhere in public, it could be a store, temperature checks are a must, temperature checks are a must, sanitisation is a must, the wearing of masks, subject to safe areas etcetera, is also a must. And these are national criteria which must be followed by all persons and all entities. Mask wearing, sanitisation, safe zones and temperature checks are now a part of the new normal that is now Jamaica and life in Covid or with Covid.
Um, funds to pay extra teachers and I would, yeah, funds to pay extra teachers?
At the basic school level? Uh, well, okay, so HM Samouda, he has indicated that he will speak to Minister Clarke to see what other assistance can be provided. Remember also Dion, that technically speaking, basic schools are not, basic schools are not, um, whilst they get assistance from the government and while we do provide for a paid teacher at the basic school level, remember for the most part, basic school, uh, basic schools are, are, are private institutions, owned and operated by someone who collects money that pays their, that pays their bills and so forth. At our Early Child Education Centre, um, we, or Commission rather, we have been working towards moving basic schools to what we call infant departments and infant, infant schools. We've asked them to register with the ECC so that they can be certified as infant departments. When they're so certified Dion, then they now come under the full government, um, well, the full remit of the government, where we pay all the teachers, take care of the bills, expenses and so forth. It just means that it will not be operated by, let's say, um, Auntie Maxine as her private business. It is now a government entity registered as an infant department. But our staff at the Ministry, our permanent secretary, CEO, I mean, listen, all our regional directors, I have to say a big thank you to all of them because they have been doing a tremendous job to ensure that education of our children remains uninterrupted, even so, even during a pandemic.
Okay, let's go to the break and I remind you of our numbers as we go, 7332461, those numbers go up to six, 8767332461, all the way up to six, stay tuned, we soon come.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ, thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on onewespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for watching.
Reduce your risk of viral illnesses like the flu and coronavirus. Wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Cover your nose and mouth when coughing with a tissue and dispose of it.
Going back to some questions, Mr. Duncan, let me, um, ask you this question coming in from a listener or viewer with people working from home and children at home, it made driving pleasant and easy, that was true. Um, can't we build on that by ensuring at least a third of employees, government and private sector, work from home?
Oh definitely, for sure, I mean, where possible, we, we need to encourage, um, work from home as, as much as possible, you know, and I think businesses have been moving to see how they can, um, support, um, you know, employers, employees and team members in terms of working from home. I think it's, it's, um, it's a good shift for us, you know, as I said, really ease the traffic on the road. And two, uh, you know, it's, it's a lot more people find themselves to be a lot more productive rather than spending time on the road there, there actually, um, you know, in their work, work in, in their, in their home space, working from home, it's really efficiency, it actually increases efficiency in a significant way, you know? So that's part of the whole flexi work, you know, where you can work from home, you work from home. Where you are, where you are, or the person and, um, you're part of that vulnerable population, if you can work from home, you work from home. So I mean, so these are, these are like real, real, um, you know, the whole flexi work legislation was introduced from 2014 and we really did not push it as a country or as, um, businesses and as government and as, you know, at the labour force, we did not move with it. Covid pushed us in this direction now until now, we're now able to really get those efficiencies and, and find that, that, and find that balance, it works well, I believe.
Mr. Vaz, you want to comment on the public sector side of it?
You know, Dion, I want to just make a more general, um, point. And the truth is that, that we are now forced as government to continue our partnership with political opposition, with the public sector, with the private sector, with the churches, NGOs and everybody. The, the fact is that the response of the Jamaican people to this pandemic has shown that when we come together and we work together, we can overcome anything. And I just want to say very clearly to the frontline workers and to everybody in the public sector, private sector, everybody, we have done a remarkable job to this point because of unity and because of partnership. And if we continue on this vein, we can undo a lot of what the wrongs that have been done in the past decades. And to say that I feel coming out of this much more positive in relation to the future of Jamaica if we can just continue on this path and don't get railroaded.
Question for you, Mr. Vaz, can people 65 and over who have no underlying health problems go to church?
Again, and, you know, I just say it as it is, you are recommended not to by the government, a responsible government. Can we stop you from doing that? No, do we have a birth certificate for you? No. So the truth is, we are giving you the guidelines under which we are recommending for you in your best interest and that's a responsibility of a good government. But fact is, if Uncle Tom is 65 or 66 and he's in great health, jogging at the dam and doing all the good things and not smoking and drinking, what, what can I tell him? What can I tell him?
Let me go to Reynolds in Kingston, Reynolds?
It is personal.
Good night Milan, to the rest of the family. My question is to Mr. Vaz.
Hold, hold on one second, I think you're both speaking at the same time, you finished, Mr. Vaz?
No, I'm just saying, it is personal responsibility and it is risk management. The government has to manage the risk and the people of Jamaica have to take personal responsibility. If we do those two things, we will overcome this pandemic and next year this time, we'll be talking about how great we did. be talking about how great we did and how great the country is doing.
Okay, go ahead, Ronald.
Yes, good night again, Mr. Miller, and good night to the rest of the panel. My question is to Mr. Vaz concerning the set cash payment. It's two sets of payments remaining, will it be paid in full at the end of the month?
You're asking if it's going to be paid in tranches still?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't want you to hold me to the end of the month because obviously, because obviously Minister Clarke just, well, the parliament just passed the supplementary yesterday. What I can say to you is based on the amount of commentary that has taken place in relation to the set cash and the care cash, I'm going to personally call Minister Clarke tonight, when this show finishes, and say to him that before he does anything else, leg of the money so the people can buy some food and keep living.
All right, Mr. Terry Long, here's a question. Is it a requirement from the Ministry of Education that students are to wear school logo masks at school? My daughter's school has sent out a letter saying it's mandatory that students wear the school mask with the logo to maintain uniformity. It's being sold for $500 each, I think it's unreasonable, I can get the same mask for $200, serving the same purpose. Is that a ministry issue?
All right, Dionne, I am, I, I'm not aware of a bulletin from the ministry that says that, um, in terms of, in, in terms of logos and masks, and, and the set school masks, et cetera. However, um, I, you know, the, the truth is, come September, what the, from my discussion with some principals and teachers, they have expressed a desire for the students to have a more uniform look come September, so the mask now becomes a part of the uniform. Certainly, things like price can be, um, can be discussed. Um, some of the school principals have indicated that they're looking at, um, three masks for $1,000 or one mask for $300 and so forth, again, which is in keeping with the ordinary price of masks. But what they have expressed is from a point of uniformity, that all masks, if it's black, it's black, if it's blue, it's blue, if it's a school color, it also helps with the school spirit. But, um, again, that sounds like an administrative position, but I can double check to see if we issued a bulletin as, as relates to a set school mask with two colors.
Hello.
What I suggest?
Go ahead, Mr. Vaz.
Can I just say something, Dionne? Can I just say something? What I would suggest to you, Alando, is a set requirement in terms of color or whatever it is, but the truth of the matter is that the market must dictate, and there is no possible way I could support anybody selling a mask or dictating that a mask must be bought at $500 when they are available at $200. And we have to, we have to protect the people from that and make sure that, that is not used as a money-making venture.
He, well, let, let, let me just follow up on that a little, Mr. Vaz, because the argument would be in the same way that they say you have to wear the school tie, which, which has a particular uniform look, that's what they want the mask to be. So, so how do you respond to that then?
I, I respond to that by simply saying as a businessman, that I know that there are going to be opportunities for this to be something of a business, and I'm saying that the people must be protected in terms of getting
Yes.
those masks at the most competitive price, and I'm very strong on that.
And, and, and in $300 is, I think that, that $250, $300 is very reasonable.
I don't, I can't answer that. I don't make masks. All I'm saying to you is that that must be, we must protect, the government must protect the students and the parents.
Y'all need to talk to all the parents and then get together and go to a school or deal with the school, all right? Maria online in Portland, Maria?
Hello, good night.
Hi, go ahead.
Yes, um, I must comment, um, you know, the, the effort that has been put in place, re, the reopening of school, but my concern is, I'm an early childhood teacher, right? And, um, at our department, that's little folks in Buckland, Mr. Vaz, now the school girl was, this one is full. Um, we have a special of little students moving up from the nurturing department, they'll be moving up to the three-year-old class. Now, how do we treat a situation like that? I also have the three-year-old who was already registered to the school moving over to the four-year-old department, and of course, it goes on. How do we treat that? Because we have one teacher that was assigned to those students, how do we treat a situation like that?
I'm not clear on the question.
All right, so the, the nurse department will be moving up to the three-year-old department?
No, I beg your pardon. When you say how do we treat, in what terms, treat them, what do you mean?
Um, based on the ratio, the teacher ratio, if it's in six to one, what do we, what are we going to do with the children who is already registered to school, they are old students, there wouldn't be new registries, the old registered children.
Okay, Mr. Terry Long?
I, um, Dionne, I'm not, I understand the question. I, I don't know if you can answer it?
My understanding is that she's talking about a situation where they're concerned that they're going to have more children in a class based on registration, the number of students who are already registered, and the number of students who are going to be moving up into the new grade, and based on the ministry's requirements now about space and, and spacing.
Okay, all right, so our, okay, our, our technical team will be working with our early childhood department, um, or early childhood commission, rather, all right, and that assistance will be given and further guidelines will be given. However, for now, one of the things that we're looking at, again, to make sure, to maintain the distance in the class, is we've stipulated, again, as I've indicated earlier, for example, zero to twelve months, we're looking at one adult to, let's say, five children, and in that, um, three to six-year-old category, we're looking at, let's say, one adult to ten children. But as we consider the, um, as we consider more directives from the Ministry of Health, all right, certainly we'll be guided by them, working with the Early Childhood Commission and our technical team at the ministry, and we will provide that update in due course.
Sorry, Dionne?
Yes?
Minister Nigel Clarke, I just emailed him the, the link. He just called me while, while, uh, Alando was on, and he wants to come on to clarify the care and the set, uh, cash. So I don't know if your producer can let him in or contact him, but he's ready to come on just to give a quick clarification, and I'm sure some timelines that I couldn't answer.
Okay, well, um, I'm sure they're working feverish later, see if we can get that in before we have to go.
It's worth, making the show go overtime. It can take five minutes, I'm sure the listeners and the viewers would, would love to hear from him.
We're having a difficulty, we're not seeing the minister apparently.
Oh, I, I, I emailed him the, 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 the information, so I'm sure he's trying to get on.
Okay, all right, I wait to be advised. Um, just one of the questions here is in relation to Andrea's asking about collaboration with telecoms firms to ensure data plans are accessible and affordable to more people. I, I know the ministry, of course, has been speaking to the, um, telecoms companies in relation to the schools, and, and we would have to, I think, take that, um, a little bit further, but I wanted to ask the, the other guests in terms of the vulnerabilities with the internet that has been exposed. Uh, Mr. Duncan, there's been a lot of concern about this talk about digital and moving forward and more e-commerce and more working from home and telecommuting, but are you concerned about the weaknesses we've seen with the infrastructure?
Very.
I think, I think we all are, I think we all are, Dionne. I mean, Lloyd and I sit on a, um, a committee, New Economy Committee, and, um, we are very much focused around, you know, um, broadband, um, internet penetration, internet is like the new water, we need, you know, it's, um, internet is even more important than building up more highways, you know? Um, you know, it's important to education, it's important to building a capacity for ICT industry, it's important to global services, which is a big, big winner for us as a, as a country, you know? So there is so much, it enhances productivity. It, um, you know, you, you know, we're seeing all the problems we've been having. Our telecommunications sector, five, 10 years ago, was like the, you know, was the darling of the, of the region, we have fallen behind, and we have some catching up to do, and I think there's going to be significant effort and push in this area if we are going to get back, um, um, to be competitive in this space so that we can be a, can be an enabler for growth and productivity, you know? So it's going to be very important that we make, we make the push in this area. And I think Minister Fava Williams, I think she is definitely committed to moving this forward, I think she will have private sector supporting her real way, and I think...
All right, Mr. Distante for you, because again, from the business perspective, a lot of what you want to do, surely you need that better infrastructure. Okay, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm, okay, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
So, so Dionne, that, that, there's no question that, uh, the COVID crisis and what we've had to deal with over the last few months has shown up, uh, the challenges and limitations in the telecommunications sector, and I don't think any of service providers would deny it. Issues of penetration, capacity, quality of service come up not only for businesses in their workplaces, but also very much for, uh, persons who are now working from home. So the construct of how services are delivered certainly needs to be revisited. Um, so you asked a question, yes, we're absolutely concerned, businesses are concerned, um, employees are concerned, um, and to the point that Keith raised, uh, the minister is very concerned.
All right, I'm, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you all to hold on just a moment, let me just bring in the Finance Minister to, to respond to that question we've got so many times about what of the COVID assistance. Can you turn on your camera and come on, please, Dr. Clarke? Dr. Nigel Clarke, Finance Minister?
Hi, Dionne, yes?
Thank you. Everybody has been saying, Dr. Clarke, want them money, want them money.
Okay, so I, Dionne, I was, somebody WhatsApp me and told me there was this conversation going on, and I, uh, called in and said, look, can I come and try to answer some of the questions that are being asked? The, with the care program, so far, we have paid out three hundred and, uh, seventy thousand pese under the compassionate grant. I'm going to share a screen, I don't know, you, you want me to try?
We don't have a holy, we don't have a holy part time, so just tell me as quickly.
You want me to share a screen? Okay, so the, in the compassionate grant, we have paid out three hundred and seventy thousand grants as at today. We were three hundred and fifty-seven thousand as at last night, and eleven thousand more were paid out today.
Sure, you can, you can share the screen while you're talking, sure.
I can share the screen, uh...
But talk same time, talk while you're...
The Jew, the Jew, they want their money.
Them said they have disabled the screen, they have disabled the screen.
Okay, while you're talking.
Compassionate Grant, three hundred and seventy thousand at a cost of, uh, three point seven billion. Set cash grant, we have paid out forty thousand set cash grants, uh, that's not unique individuals, it could be, uh, maybe twenty-seven thousand unique individuals.
I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you with respect because you're telling me what you've paid out already, the people who have been calling in, the people who have been calling in have been saying, hey, we haven't got money yet, so when are we going to?
So, I want you to understand, so we have been paying out from the contingencies fund. The contingencies fund had four point five billion dollars in it. We have paid out up until last night, four point three billion out of the contingencies, which is why I need a supplementary to be passed for the remaining amounts to be paid. When we have finished paying, we think the number could be anywhere between nine, ten or eleven billion.
But when people go, when, when, Dr. Clarke? Give me the when, because I have about thirty seconds left in the program.
By the, by, by the end of June, from tomorrow, Friday, next week onwards until the end of June. By the end of June, we expect that we'll have over ninety-odd percent of the grants of eligible persons who have been verified and whose bank accounts are valid, over ninety-odd percent of them will be paid by the end of June. I want to, since I have this opportunity, Dionne, just to say that we have had a tremendous amount of challenge with the banking system. The government is ready, certainly, uh, you know, to pay or things have been validated, people have been seen as eligible, but the, the, the banking system hasn't, did not validate over a hundred thousand, uh, persons' accounts, and the teams had to be working with the banks at the level of their CEOs to resolve some of those differences. We've resolved a lot of them now, so that's not a problem, that's not a challenge of the government.
I, I got you, Dr. Clarke, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, that sounds like a conversation we need to pick up on on another day though, because I'm entirely out of time for this program. Really appreciate your coming on at the last minute to give us that information to our viewers and listeners, and thank you so much to all the guests we've had on throughout the Town Hall. Thanks as always to you at home for watching, for listening, for sending in those questions and your comments as well. And on behalf of the news and production teams, I'm Dionne Jackson-Miller. Do enjoy the rest of your evening and stay safe.
Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos on Onespotmedia.com, click here. Thank you very much for... Hi there, I'm Simon Preston from TVJ. Thank you very much for watching our YouTube channel. To see our latest videos and also to see live events, click here. To see our full videos...